Good evening, I'd like to call the April 8th meeting of the Sacramento County Planning Commission to order. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Good evening Commissioners, Commissioner Hom.
Here.
Polley.
Here.
Shelby.
Here.
Tatishee.
Here.
Martenson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. We'll start with introduction of county staff, starting with County Council.
Hi, I'm Krista Whitman, Assistant County Counsel, sitting in for public.
Alma Munoz, Assistant Clerk from the Clerk of the Board's Office.
Chris Bohle, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review.
We have quite a few speakers tonight that have already signed in. If you haven't already, there's a sign up computer in the back and when we get to the item, we'll call speakers in the order that they've signed up. If you do wish to speak tonight, we'll swear you all in at this time, so you can stand now and our clerk will swear you all in.
Please raise your right hand and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth, so help you, God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn. Thank you.
And one housekeeping item tonight, we are going to switch the order slightly. We're going to take item three last, as we have several speakers and it might take a little bit more time, so we'll give that its due time and item four will be bumped up to item three. Please call the first item.
Item number one, PLMP 2018-00369, use permit and design review, OP 1100 Owner LLC, applicant T-Mobile located at 950 Howe Avenue in the Ardent Arcade Community. Environmental document is a categorical exemption.
Good evening, my name's Nishant Sehony, I'm the Lead Planner for this project. We have a presentation prepared, if you want to see that, otherwise I can just go over the key points of the project.
I think key points are...
Key points as well.
Okay. Before that, I do want to note that there was a minor error in the staff report in
the attachments and we sent you an email correcting that. Attachment one, or sorry, attachment four, exhibit A and exhibit C have been corrected. If you need copies, I have them and I think Alma does as well. So this is the Howe Avenue Use Permit Project. It's fairly straightforward. There are two PG&E towers right now, both of which have antennas on them. The applicant is proposing to remove the antennas from the tower on the left in that picture and move them to the one on the right. That will increase the height of the second tower from 68 feet to 81 feet and 6 inches. The equipment for the original tower will remain where it is and there will be a fence built around that, as our condition calls for a six-foot tall wooden fence. And then the ground equipment that will remain in that location will connect to the second tower and the antennas there via a trench. Project went to CPAC, didn't receive any public comment. CPAC recommended approval of the project. The DRAC met in February and recommended that we find the project in compliance with the design guidelines and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Do we have the applicant here? Just want to come down and just make sure you're okay with all the conditions, give you a chance to make some comments if you like.
Hi, my name's Jeff Leonard. My address is 2154 Medici Way, Eldorado Hills, California. I don't, we don't have any issues with the conditions of approval.
Great. Any questions of the applicant? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion, comments?
I'll move the staff recommendations, one, two, and three.
I'll second it.
Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Please call our next item.
Item number two is PLMP 2018-00025, tentative parcel map use permit, special development permit and design review. Final approval is by the Board of Supervisors. Burlington Coat Factory of Florin Inc., applicant Takar South SAC Inc., located on the northwest corner of 65th Street Florin Road intersection in the South Sacramento Community. Environmental document is a negative declaration.
This item, this project site is located at the northwest corner of 65th Street and Florin Road in an existing 13-acre retail mall parking lot. The requested entitlements are a tentative parcel map, a use permit, a special development permit, design review, and a PCN for alcohol sales, which will be heard by the Board under a separate item. This is the project site location and then you can see a photo of the corner of 65th and Florin where the proposed project will be located. This, the first entitlement is a tentative parcel map. It will divide 13.08 acres into two lots. Lot A is going to be the 11.38 acres and it's going to contain the existing building, which is a Burlington Coat Factory and the parking lot. Lot B is going to be 1.25 acres and it will create a separate lot for the convenience store, drive-through restaurant, and gasoline service station. The second entitlement is a use permit to the Board of Supervisors. It is for the gasoline service station, the 24-hour convenience store within 500 feet of a residential zone, and a drive-through restaurant in the shopping center zoning district. The third entitlement is a special development permit. It will allow the development to deviate from the zoning code requirement for a 25-foot wide landscape area between a drive-through and the back of the sidewalk. The applicant is proposing 20 feet, which will match the existing landscaping that has been recently installed along the 65th Street frontage. It will keep this landscaping from being disturbed. There is also a special development permit associated with signage and what will occur is that the zoning code currently permits 125 square feet of signage for gasoline service stations. This includes the freestanding wall signs and canopy signage. Per staff also is going through a process determined that the signage on the pumps should be counted in the square footage of the signage, which we reviewed and it was not exempt. So then what happened is then this will end up exceeding the 125 square foot feet of signage that is normally looked at. And so the applicant has requested the special development permit and what we're doing is we're putting the signage that is associated with the pump canopy, I mean, I'm sorry, with the pumps in that special development permit. And one thing to note is that previously, at the end of January, January 28th, staff did come before the Planning Commission and asked you to authorize a zoning code update of the signed chapter. And what staff is anticipating is that the overall gas station signage and its square footage would be evaluated through that. But in the interim, what we have decided to do is take the total of the square footage of the signage that people are proposing on their pumps and include that in the special development permit. And we should note that the applicant has indicated that the signage they're proposing is standard for ARCO gas stations. And they have requested the 447.84 square footage and what that does is includes the ARCO name, their decal, and then what they're calling CR&amp;D advertising between the top and the actual area where you would go and put in your information for pumping gas. And so what that does is it brings the total for the whole entire gas station signage to the 572.84. And then there was also design review for the structures and the signage. And what is occurring is that there's going to be approximately 5,000 square feet of buildings and it isn't going to include the square footage of the convenience store and then the drive-through restaurant and then the gas station island canopy. So the things that we wanted to note is that the final hearing body for this item is the Board of Supervisors. Site access will be right in and right out from Florin Road and unrestricted left and right from 65th Street and that there are two internal driveways that will be through the existing shopping center. Reciprocal access agreements are proposed as part of the mapping process. Traffic was evaluated as part of the environmental document and no mitigation measures associated with traffic will occur. Noise impacts from the drive-through include the amplified speaker, but that was also evaluated and determined that there would be no noise impacts. Public safety, of course, was evaluated and there is lighting that was, that is included in the packet, so onsite lighting was look at it, looked at. And then in the conditions of approval, we have the SEP TED, which you normally see associated with gas stations. And then we have the standard conditions which relate to the convenience stores. Again, to note that the public convenience and necessity permit for the alcohol sales is going to be considered by the Board as a separate item and the Planning Commission typically doesn't look at these. So to note, this went to the South Sacramento CPAC on February 20th of 2019. There was no public input and they did recommend approval of both the use, the tentative map use permit for the gasoline service station and then they also recommended approval of the PCN. The project also went to DRAC on January 24th and again, they recommended that the Board find it consistent with the countywide design guidelines. So in summary, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Board to adopt the negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and then to approve the project with the findings and conditions which are contained in attachment two of the staff report. Are there any questions of staff?
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just a little point of clarification. Good evening, by the way.
Good evening.
Thank you for the presentation. I noticed in the staff report on the, I guess, the retails or the fast, or the space next door to the ARCO facility with the drive-through, your presentation states that it's going to have a 24-hour drive-through window, but the staff report is somewhat, you know, unclear on that. So the goal is to have a 24/7 drive-through window?
Yes.
Okay, as part of the application, okay.
Yes.
And then you had mentioned the sound for the ordering, but there, I didn't notice there's any kiosks associated with a separate standalone ordering kiosk as part of the drive-through. So is that part of the conditions that we're looking for approval, that there will be a kiosk there?
Yes, it will have amplified sound.
That was it, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we have the applicant here?
Leslie Burnside with Barrehausen, I'm representing the project. I also have the developers here tonight and also our traffic consultants. Hopefully you won't have that many questions. We appreciate the very thorough recap that Leanne did. Don't really have a prepared presentation for you, mostly here for questions. We're very proud of the project, we think it'll be a good addition to this corner. Lots of beautiful landscaping, a lot of lighting, a lot of security cameras, a lot of interaction with the sheriff and getting some good feedback to get to this point. So we're delighted to be here and if you have any questions, I'll do my best to entertain them.
And you accept all the conditions?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay, great, thank you so much.
Okay.
Entertain discussion, motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll make the motion to accept staff recommendations.
I'll second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, we are going to take item four next.
Item number four, PLMP 2018-00192, use permit amendment and design review. Final approval is by the Board of Supervisors. Johnny Jovanifard, located at 7149 South Watt Avenue at the northeast corner of the South Watt Avenue and Florin Road intersection in the Vineyard Community. Environmental document is a negative declaration.
Hi, good evening, my name is Jessie Shen and I'm the Lead Planner for this project. Wait, is, hold on. Sorry, I have a presentation, let me get that up and running. Great. Okay. The project site is located at 7149 South Watt Avenue at the northeast corner of the South Watt Avenue and Florin Road intersection in the Vineyard Community. The request is for a use permit amendment to allow 24-hour operations at an existing automobile service station and convenience store in the general commercial zoning district as well as design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. A bit of background about this project, the Board of Supervisors approved the Jovan Petroleum Service Station project and granted use per, the use permit in June of 1999. This is the use permit that established the existing uses on the site. It allowed for a primary automobile service station and a 24-hour convenience store market with a quick-serve restaurant, as well as approving a deviation for the allowed roof structure height of the canopy to exceed the height. The approved condition 23 of the original use permit included a 10-year sunset on the 24-hour operations of the automobile service station and convenience store, which expired in June of 2009. The sunset was placed on the original use permit as a larger geographic area surrounding the project site was designated as a new growth area and no comprehensive plan had been adopted to guide the future development of the site or of the neighborhood in that time. So absent of a comprehensive plan for the area, the, the staff report at that time indicated that the former Jovan Shell, the former Jovan Project appeared to be premature and thus placed the sunset clause on the approved condition. The convenience store is also allowed to sell alcohol under a type 20 license for off-sale beer and wine and per ABC records, this license has been active as of July 2000. All of the project structures as part of the former Jovan Petroleum Project were constructed on the project site and operational by 2000. This is the approved site plan as part of the original use permit and these are some current photos of the project site. The left photo, you'll see a view of the fuel canopy and pump island area, as well as the entrance to the convenience store and exit of the car wash. And then the photo on the right, you'll see the monument sign and frontage landscaping from South Watt Avenue. Just a quick overview of existing uses in the project vicinity. Parcels to the north and east of the project site, which are zone general commercial, contain remnants of prior commercial uses, as well as single-family residential structures on each parcel. To the north, the existing residential use is adjacent to the car wash facility and that has been the case as well with the original use permit. And to the east, there are remnants of the outdoor home and garden decor commercial uses as well as a residential use and the commercial uses are intervening between the project site as well and the single-family residential structure. Then areas west, south, and southwest of the project site are vacant and undeveloped. Key points, the final hearing body is the Board. There are no physical changes proposed to existing structures or signage on the site. However, given the additions and amendments to the zoning code since development of the former Jovan Shell project, several use and development standards applicable to this use now are no longer in compliance. These include minimum setback trash enclosure from residential uses, hours of operation, and other standards associated with car wash facilities, minimum width of drive-through lanes and minimum planters, width of planters adjacent to South Watt. But because there are no physical changes proposed on the project site, the threshold for requiring compliance with current use standards are not, is not triggered. But where development on the project site is not in compliance with the site plan as approved with the original use permit, we have included new conditions of approval to require areas of substandard or missing landscaping or the presence of illegal banners or freestanding dumpsters to be removed. Okay, sorry. The project site is also compatible with existing land uses in the surrounding neighborhood. As mentioned, this use has been in operation in the neighborhood for 18 years and the allowance of 24-hour operations with this automobile service station and car wash would not result in existing uses becoming incompatible. Additionally, this project, or this existing commercial use is envisioned in the Vineyard, in the Vineyard Florin Community, Vineyard Florin Community Plan as a commercial core and so this use, this existing use allowing it to continue would help further the realization of commercial development envisioned for this area. The environmental document for this project was the prior initial study and negative declaration for the former Jovan Petroleum Project. That environmental document concluded that the action would not result in significant impacts with the implementation of noise mitigation measures, which included the construction of a sound barrier, identification and orientation of the car wash facility model, as well as restrictions on the hours of operation. And these would be maintained with this use permit as well. The prior environmental document prepared remains appropriate, remains the appropriate environmental document for the current project and no subsequent environment document, environmental document is required. As this use permit amendment opens up the entirety of the original use permit to scrutiny, PER sees it as an opportunity to line this existing use granted 20 years ago with current standards. Thus, PER staff is recommending the following, to amend approved condition 15 to limit the hours of alcohol sales between 6:00 and 10:00 p.m. and to require refrigeration units to be locked and secured after 10:00 p.m. Currently, the convenience store is allowed to sell alcohol between 6:00 a.m. to midnight and this is a recommendation made by the Sheriff's Department. These modifications are consistent with the parameters provided for any new convenience store proposing to sell alcohol. The county does not generally regulate hours of alcohol sales through use permits and this is a unique situation because it was included in the original use permit. We're also recommending to amend approved condition 23 to modify the car wash facility hours to operate between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Current, or sorry, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and it currently operates between 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The limitations on these, on the hours for the car wash is because of a zoning code amendment that was added in June 2018, which identified that if you're within 300 feet of residential zones, these are the permitted hours of use for the car wash facility. And we are also recommending to amend approved condition 23 to remove the sunset and to allow, to continue the allowance of 24-hour use for the existing automobile service station and community, and convenience store. There's also new conditions added by PER. As I had mentioned earlier, condition 36 and 37 are included to address where existing development on the project site is not in compliance with approved exhibits to the original use permit and that's specifically areas where there are substandard or missing landscaping and then the removal of illegal banners and the freestanding dumpster. There are new conditions also requested by the Department of Health Services to require participation in the Sacramento Healthy Stores Initiative. This is in line with the county's, with several board-approved documents, including the general plan, countywide design guidelines, and zoning code that, that the county's goal is, is to be committed to improving and increasing access to fresh and healthy foods. This project, the design review administrator recommends that the Board finds the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. And this project also went to the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Committee on October 2nd, 2018 and they recommended approval of the project. CPAC members inquired whether crime or vagrancy was an issue and the frequency of those events. The applicant responded and provide, and described safety measures that are taken by the staff. They, they indicated that there are self-imposed safety measures, including locking up the convenience store doors after 11:00 p.m. and locking refrigerator units containing alcohol beverages after a certain time and that crime or vagrancy was not a common issue at their project site. And no members of the Vineyard Community spoke against the project. So to that end, staff recommends approval of the project to recognize the environmental coordinator memo dated December 7th, 2018 and determine that the negative declaration prepared pursuant to the SEQA for the former Jovan Shell project is still adequate and appropriate for the project to approve the use permit amendment and to find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines.
Great. Thank you for that thorough report. Any questions of staff? Okay, great, we'll bring the applicant up.
Good evening, Jim Wiley with Taylor &amp; Wiley on behalf of the applicant and want to thank staff for their presentation. Thank you for moving us up one and we concur with the staff recommendation and the conditions and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Entertain a motion?
I'll move the, I'll move the approved staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Back to item three.
Item number three, PLMP 2018-00190, use permit, Jesuit High School located at 1200 Jacob Lane in the Carmichael Community. Environmental document is notice of exemption. Just a moment, please.
Thank you. The project site is located at 1200 Jacob Lake. It is a Jesuit High School athletic field in the Carmichael Community. The Jesuit High School property itself is outlined in red and then the athletic field has the red hashes. The requested entitlements are a use permit amendment and a design review. Again, the aerial photo shows the athletic field and the surrounding area and then there's a photo of the scoreboard and it is looking west along the westerly property line and you can see the scoreboard and on the top of that are the public address system or the speakers. This is a site plan of the athletic field and you can note where the location is of the new scoreboard along the westerly area of that athletic field. So in 2015, Jesuit High School remodeled their athletic field. The scoreboard was originally located on the east side of the field and the speakers were on the press box. PER staff did review a grading plan and building submittals and approved a substantial compliance request. It did not include the location of the scoreboard and the PA system in those documents. However, the applicant did believe that the scoreboard was covered under the previous substantial compliance request. So what has happened is the use permit amendment seeks to legalize the existing scoreboard and the relocated public address system on the athletic field. We would note that the county did begin receiving noise complaints from the neighbors on Piccadilly Circle about the sound level of the system in around August of 2015. And the applicant has provided a noise analysis for both the current location of the speakers and an alternative location for the PA system. These have also been reviewed by PER staff. The conditions of approval currently permit the speakers in the current location or at the alternative location. And to provide you a little bit more detail about the alternative location, during the processing of the use permit, the applicant did provide information on a different location with different speakers and a different number of speakers that we did look at. So they have provided site plans and an acoustical analysis for that location. They're proposing in this alternative, four speakers, the two would be located behind each set of bleachers, the home and the visitor. They would be mounted on wooden utility poles at a maximum of 35 feet tall behind the visitor stands and 44 feet tall behind the home stands and they would be direct- neighbors regarding the noise associated with the games and then the alternative location. The Carmichael CPAC did meet on this item on September 19th of 2018, and they did recommend approval of it. We would note that there were no members of the community in attendance, and there weren't any members, any questions from the CPAC. So staff is recommending approval of this project. We would like the planning commission to recognize the exempt status of the request under section 15323 of SEQA. We would like the planning commission to approve the use permit amendment subject to the findings and conditions listed in attachment two of the staff report, and we would like you to find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. Are there any questions of staff?
Any questions?
I, I just want to make sure I understand. Are, is staff recommending that they can put the public address system in either of two locations?
Yes.
Versus a specific location?
Yes. I mean, so what they've, what we have done is they had their current location, which is where they are, which is on top of the scoreboard. And, but during the processing of the application, they provided us with the information for a different location. So we tried to craft the conditions of approval such that they can put them in either location.
And so, well, I'll, I'll wait till the neighbors speak, but do either of those locations solve the, the neighborhood noise problem?
I believe that the letter from the neighbors indicates a preference for the alternative location, which, as I discussed, is the four speakers, two located behind the visitor stands and two located behind the home stands.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, is there a reason why we, staff didn't recommend to, to force that change? Do staff believe that both options are within our, within our noise guidance?
Yeah. Based on the studies that we had, it indicated that both options fell within our noise ordinance guidelines.
What's the difference between the two?
And I think all adding to that, I think, given the absence of overwhelming community consensus as we went through the CPAC process and went out to the community, I think, given, given that there wasn't a, a strong desire on the part of the neighbors through that process, staff felt comfortable moving forward with this, with this recommendation.
And I'm assuming there was no reference in the original substantial compliance permit to the speakers. It sounds like there was confusion as to whether the PA system was covered, but I'm assuming that wasn't even referenced in the actual permit.
That, that's correct. Staff doesn't believe that moving the scoreboard and the speakers were covered in that, which is why we asked the applicant, applicant to come back with the use permit amendment, and they have.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
Leanne, I thought I read in the staff report that on the report by Paul Ballard that there was readings taken was higher than the county allowance, and then the volume was turned down.
Yes.
Come down. So could there still be human error, somebody inadvertently turning up the volume on the PA system?
There could be, and what we tried to do was address that in the conditions of approval and have it so that the PA speaker should be set so that it did comply with our noise standards.
Okay.
Was what we had put in the conditions of approval. I believe it's like, it is one of the conditions.
Good, thank you.
I, I didn't, I apologize that I didn't notice, but are there hours of operation constraints?
Yes, there are also hours of operation constraints, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
10:00 p.m.?
Yes.
I'm sorry, condition of approval number six addresses the hours of operation.
Thank you, yeah.
Other questions, staff? Okay, we'll bring up the applicant.
Thank you. David Higgins, I have been sworn. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of Jesuit High School, and I was volunteer construction manager overseeing this project. This is kind of an unusual case as we kind of have a little bit of a dispute of the clarity of our construction documents. We hired Verde Design, who's designed several of these fields in our region, and Roebling Construction, who's built several of these fields. And I think sometimes when you have an architect and contractor working together that know each other well, you get a little complacency. There is a note that shows the scoreboard being relocated, but it could have been a lot better. We obtained a building permit. We completed the project in August and obtained a certificate of occupancy with the scoreboard in place. We felt that having a building inspector sign off, it's done. Unfortunately, the first day we used the field, there was a lack of adult supervision, and a kid cranked it on tin and played rap music and screamed the microphone all day. And granted, the neighbors called Susan Peters' office Monday morning, rightfully so. It was a mistake on our part. So we retained Paul Ballard, had meetings with Susan's office, her staff, county council, Leanne Moffitt several times. We felt that this process was the most amicable way to resolve it. When the staff report was generated, and I'd like to thank Leanne, she put a lot of effort into it, the Board of Trustees of Jesuit had not approved funding to relocate the speakers. It's fairly expensive. Since the staff report was issued, the board did meet in February and has approved a project to relocate the speakers. During construction, the speakers were originally located on top of the press box, which faces the narrow axis of the field, which faces the neighbors on American River Drive. We thought we were doing a good thing by putting them down the long axis, pointing, you know, the furthest away from the homes. Unfortunately, the speakers, I believe, have a fiberglass shroud and they radiate base. So Father McGary, our president, has spent several hours standing behind the speakers, listening to them. He agrees the sound, we want to be a good neighbor to our neighbors, and so we're going to resolve it. We've also added landscaping. We've planted redwood trees. We painted the back of the scoreboard green to try to help it blend in. So we've been doing everything we think we can. Any questions?
Mr.? So I, again, I'm still not clear about this. Are you putting the sound system in the alternate location, or? I'm not clear about the sound system and where it would be.
Currently, the two speakers that provide the sound are on top of the scoreboard. And we're going to remove those and place, so we went to the expert, Paul Ballard, and said, what do you do? Paul said, in a normal situation, in a normal football stadium like this, you have permanent lighting. The speakers go on the permanent lighting poles. And so what we're going to do is put the speakers on temporary wooden poles as if there was permanent lighting there, and put them above the, the bleachers and point them directly at the people. And we've had it engineered. Paul designed it, and we feel that's the best solution to this problem for sound. And that project's been approved, and we'll, we're in the process of obtaining a building permit and getting it done.
So, so then, I'm, I'm sorry, you guys, I don't mean to be slow, but, so is that alternative number two?
Yes.
Which, that's alternative number two. And so is, is the concern with staff about specifying alternative number two, that if that doesn't work, they can't, there's not a backup plan?
No. I think at the time that we were working through this process, the, the applicant wanted the flexibility of, of using either the first or second alternative. I think, given the direction that, that we're headed this evening, we can recommend revisions to condition of approval number two and condition of approval seven to specify that the alternative location is in fact what would be conditioned as part of the project.
Thank you.
And would it just be simpler to strike the, the first option from the conditions?
That's correct. There's language in condition of approval two and seven that can be struck to make that noted.
Okay. And it sounds like you'd be amenable to that.
Yes, we would.
Okay.
I just do have one question. Did Paul actually do a analysis using the four speakers on a pole and come up with the approximate decibel level at field, field height?
Yes. He, he did a simulation along, we have a, a vendor that actually designs the system. So he did the analysis. He did the modeling, and Paul validated it. Paul, I forget, I think there's a supplemental letter that says the reduction at the residences is estimated to a 10 to 20 decibel reduction.
Okay, so, so Paul did validate their?
Yes.
Reduction.
Also, there is a fairly sophisticated digital signal processor, which does have a maximum volume limiter that supposedly only the technician can change. But you know kids.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing, and I'm just going to call you in order. Come up to the podium as I call you and state your name that you've been sworn for the record. We'll start with Judy.
Good evening. My name is Judy Press, and I've been sworn. We live at 840 Piccadilly Circle, and we've lived there since March 14th, 1989, so 30 years. We've never had a problem with noise until the last four years, when the field was redesigned and the big speaker went up. The problem with that speaker is that we are unable to enjoy our property any longer. The backyard is not usable when a game is going with the speaker so loud that we hear the child's first and last name being announced. And also inside the house, when we're trying to watch television, we're having like competing, it's like two televisions playing different stations. So it's very difficult. Also, there's a problem with the number of games. Last week, we had something on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So it's impossible to, to have company over, plan anything, because the noise just goes on all day. And when the speakers are on, they seem to go up. And when there's a touchdown, it's like a thunderous touchdown, you know, and the kid's name and everything. And also, when they start races, the foot races, they use a gun. And we have a former Greyhound racing dog who cannot handle that. She goes in the shower, lies down, trembles for hours and hours, because these games go on four, five hours. We have noise just coming and coming, and the gun has, it's, it has a horrible impact on her. And that was the main thing that I wanted to say, that another, another dog, I'm dog sitting hides under the bed and cries. I'm, I wasn't aware that they had put in the four speakers that they were going to do over the stadium. And by training, I'm a speech therapist, and the noise in our neighborhood, 80 to 90 decibels, is very, very harmful for your ears. So I'm thinking, if I'm in my living room and I'm upset, I can't imagine the people sitting in the bleachers, what they're going through. They're being bombarded by this loud sound. So I think the, the speakers over the stadium, or the bleachers, is a good idea, but there's no need to crank it up so loud. People are there, they're watching the game, they see when there's a touchdown. They don't need to be told it's a touchdown. So I think if they would just try and be a good neighbor, turn everything down for the benefit of the neighbors, for the benefit of the spectators, and, and not use a gun, how about one of those, whatever they call them, those?
Whistle.
What are they called?
A whistle.
A whistle or anything to start the game. When you shoot that gun off, my dog is destroyed for the rest of the day, and I don't know what to do, other than leave the house for three or four hours. So basically, I think that's it. Okay. Thank you.
I have a, I have a quick question, if you don't mind, just a quick question. It, it sounds like that it's not just the speakers or the gun that you're concerned about, but it's the sound of the crowd as well?
No, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the sound of the crowd. I'm just saying that if people are sitting in bleachers and, and we are hearing the sound on our property, and they are being blasted with the sound, I don't understand why it has to be so loud. I have a friend who went to a rock concert, and the levels were in the 90 decibels, and for a short, very short exposure, exposure, she suffers from tinnitus and it's permanent damage to her ears, and there's nothing they can do for her. So I'm saying your spectators also need to be respected and not cause any damage to their ears. So.
Thank you.
I said, before they did all this, we didn't have a problem with the school at all and that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Elizabeth Hughes.
Thank you. I've been sworn. I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to present our concerns. My name is Elizabeth Hughes, and I live at 844 Piccadilly Circle with my husband. And I'm speaking today on behalf of our neighbors at 843 Piccadilly, 836 Piccadilly, and 855 Piccadilly to comment on the Jesuit permit amendment. We'd like to say thank you to Jesuit for preparing an alternative plan for their speaker placement. And we are in sport, in support of Jesuit's request for the alternative plan to move the speakers back to the bleacher area. Our neighborhood is negatively impacted by the current speaker location, and we strongly urge the commission to make the alternative speaker location request a condition of permit approval. The condition mitigation measures per the Office of Planning and Environmental Review indicates in item two that the action is intended to permit the speakers either in the current location on top of the scoreboard or at four locations behind the bleachers. We take strong objection to the term either, as it will not solve the sound and noise issues that we have been plagued with since 2015. We ask the commission to, to condition the speaker relocation request with language that states Jesuit shall relocate the speakers. The advisory condition in item seven states that the applicant may remove the speakers from the top of the scoreboard and replace them with four speakers in the other alternative request. Again, we strongly request that the commission approve this condition with language that states Jesuit shall relocate the speakers. It should not be an option. For your review, I provided a summary of the decibel tracking data for 31 different event readings during the period between October 2018 and March 2019. This is not all the events that have occurred, it is just a sampling of events. There are many, many, many events all during the year. The results of this data clearly show Jesuit's speaker decibel levels typically exceed normal ranges. In fact, of these 31 data points, only five are showing below 75 decibels, and that is the level of a vacuum cleaner going at 10 feet away from you. Typical Jesuit sporting events exceed 75 decibel levels 84% of the time, just based on those 31 dataset readings. The January 2019 speaker sound evaluation letter prepared by Ballard indicated that moving the speakers further from the Piccadilly property line is likely to lower the decibel levels to 60. We seek a decibel level not to exceed 60. And the readings that we took were the same decibel meter tool that was used by Ballard. Please recognize that no current sound evaluation was performed by Ballard Consultants. Their report references a study that was conducted in 2015. In addition, the 2015 report did not evaluate noise in the backyard at 844 Piccadilly. Our hillside property is approximately 50 feet from the scoreboard, and our living spaces are elevated 20 feet from the street, almost level with the scoreboard. Please also recognize we are, we're not notified of the Carmichael CPAC meeting, and we had no opportunity to make comment. We are in Sacramento, and we are 500 feet from Jesuit, and we were not notified of that CPAC meeting. And Carmichael CPAC does not speak for the residents of Piccadilly Circle. So my neighbors have shared with me that they have not been, they were never notified about the original construction project that was initiated in 2015, and that's not something I can speak to today. We have met several times with Jesuit representatives and requested that they lower the speaker volume. Their current request to move the speakers to a location further away from the Piccadilly property line and we were not notified of that CPAC meeting. And Carmichael CPAC does not speak for the residents of Piccadilly Circle. So my neighbors have shared with me that they have not been... They were never notified about the original construction project that was initiated in 2015. And that's not something I can speak to today. We have met several times with Jesuit representatives and requested that they lower the speaker volume. Their current request to move the speakers to a location further away from the Piccadilly property lines should be given your full support. My husband and I and Piccadilly neighbors are all here in support of their request for the alternative speaker location. Thank you.
Thank you. Can staff just address the... How the process for notification of neighbors of CPAC events, just so, for the record?
Yes. We prepare a mailing list of all of the neighbors that are either within 500 feet or 30 distinct people. We did prepare a mailing list for the Carmichael item, and we were actually surprised that there weren't any members in attendance. So we actually did go and double-check with a person that we knew would have been on the mailing list, and they did indicate that they received the mailing.
Okay. Thank you. Ryan?
Yes, good evening.
Delanowith?
Yeah, Ryan Belonowith. I live at 848 Piccadilly Circle. The score... We bought the home in April of 2016. So scoreboard was already in place when we bought the house. So we kind of knew what we were getting into. Of course, we didn't hear any... At the time we bought the house and looked at the house, we didn't see any games. So we didn't get an opportunity to hear the noise coming out of the speakers or the volume levels. But we were aware there was a scoreboard there. What concerns me tonight is looking online on the Planning Commission's website, I found documents that show a lighting plan for the new fields. And it has me concerned that the school is trying to get lights approved via this process. There is a lighting schedule that shows 88 luminaires being installed. That's 22 lights per pole. We take strong objection to the lighting plan if Jesuit intends to install these lights. As a neighbor as well, I was not made aware of the CPAC hearing at Carmichael, for the record. We never... Did not receive a mailing if there was one sent to our home. The noise is extremely loud out of the speakers. My house is directly behind the scoreboard. So my house takes the brunt, I believe, of the volume that comes out of those. Again, bought a house near a high school. I'm Jesuit alumni. Love the school. Full support of the school. However, I don't think that the school took into full account of the noise that comes out of these speakers in relation to all our neighbors. I think they could have done a better job of locating these speakers. I'm in support of them moving them. But again, I'm extremely concerned in what I found today, that they're using a lighting study to document where they're going to put these temporary poles for their... For the speakers. The plan that was submitted to the county for approval does show future conduit work for the poles that are intended to be erected. But again, I am extremely concerned that they're going to install 100-foot-tall steel poles in lieu of these 35- and 40-foot wooden poles. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And just for clarification, what we're voting on tonight is just an amendment to the use permit with respect to the sound system.
That's correct. If there were additional changes recommended to light the sporting field, that would come with a subsequent amendment to the use permit. That is not something that is in front of the commission at this time.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Miriam Mircast? Sorry if I'm butchering names.
Hello. My name's Miriam Mircast, and I've been sworn in. I live beside Ryan, and also two doors down from Judy. I've also been a resident of Piccadilly Circle, 852 Piccadilly Circles, for about 30 years now, off and on. It's my parents' old home. We've been good neighbors with Jesuit before they had the wall, before they did a lot of things. And they've been great. We never had a problem with them before. I never had a problem with them before. As Judy said, I have three dogs. They're terrorized by the noise. I have one dog that will not go outside after an event in Jesuit for a day and a half. He cowers in his room under something, under the couch, in his pen, whatever. Just will not come out. Just shakes. Even though I give him like calming treats to mitigate the problems, it doesn't work. So we usually have to go away. This week, because of what they did yesterday, I had to send my dog away to San Francisco. That's one. Two, we were not invited to or informed of the CPAC meeting in Carmichael, because we're not Carmichael residents. We are Sacramento residents. The line just cuts right at Piccadilly Circle. So that's probably why we were not invited or notified about it, just to clarify that. With the gun, it is extremely loud. They've got two types, one that's less loud, one that's extremely loud. What they can do is use an alternative way of starting these track meets. Whistle, whatever, something that's less obtrusive to the neighborhood, and will not put everybody in PTSD mode. Even me being outside, when that goes off and I'm not expecting it, I just jump and shake. So it's not just my dogs. As far as the noise level goes, it can get really out of hand. Sometimes, when they're not having a Jesuit-specific event, like there's other teams there playing against each other, which they do, it's at much lower level. So it's not like they can't have their games without having it at extreme turned-up volume. But for example, if they're... If it's Rio, which is my alma mater, versus Jesuit, like they had a couple weeks ago or last week, it is really high. And you combine that with the crowds, and them coming and parking and blocking my driveway, which, as I'm driving up, these people are blocking my driveway. These things, we've accepted. And we're like, "You've done your job. You've put a sign out, 'Do not park on the street.' That's great." But when you turn up the volume specifically for certain games, that's something you can control. That's not being a good neighbor. When there've been so many complaints asking you to turn down the volume, it is not necessary. When I'm inside my home, watching Netflix, TV turned up, cranked up loud, and I feel like the noise level is louder in my living room than it is, like my TV, that's unacceptable. I can't imagine what the people in the stands are going through. They're going to be deaf if they keep coming to these games. It's ridic... Nobody needs that level of noise. Nobody. And then, the fact is that they turn it down for certain games and rank it up for others. So it depends on when they do their study. Like, sure, if they know that somebody's coming to the study, they're going to turn it down. There needs to be some kind of rule where they can't turn it up to a certain level. And the other thing is, is that, you know, they have a permit to have this level of noise at 10 o'clock at night. There are children that want to sleep. There's me that wants to sleep. I sleep early. 10 o'clock at night? You can have that level of noise at 10 o'clock at night? I came home one day after work, and it was like... I drove up to my driveway, got out of the car, and I felt like I was living in a discotheque, because the whole ground was shaking, and there was music going on. And I thought literally, "Is Ryan having a party?" No. He can't, because his speakers aren't that loud. And I actually recorded it. Like, it was... The music was vibrating through me. I'm like, "Well, great. I'm not at a concert," because I was at a concert last week, and it was lower. Not okay. If they want to be a good neighbor, we've been there for 30 years, never complained. We're good neighbors to them. We tolerate a lot. You know, we're just asking for basic, like, you know, be decent. Rio Americano isn't doing that. Why are there two standards for them and Rio Americano? Because they're a private school. And they get... They make money out of these things. It's not fair for them to profit off of our misery. That's all.
Thank you. And finally, we'll call up David Higgins Jr., please. Oh, I guess you've... You're the applicant, so we'll call you back up for rebuttal.
Well, I think, as we stated previously, we want to be a good neighbor. Yeah, this wasn't our best moment. And we are going to relocate the speakers. I did speak with Paul Ballard about questioning the readings. And he did say there is a different weighting system on meters. There's an A and B. And sometimes, if you have to switch a different way, you'll get a different reading. So he felt, in his opinion, it'd be really hard to get some of the readings that have been quoted. But either way, it's loud, it's obnoxious. We're going to move the speakers. So I think staff's working on amending the document, and that should be it. As to the permanent lights, we utilized an analysis that was done by Musco Lighting, just because it was the clearest document that showed the location. We did put in underground conduits with the original construction, because it would have been a disaster to put them in later, because we have a synthetic track and artificial turf. So there is the conduits. But we understand that if we ever desired permanent lights for that stadium, it'd be an EIR process. And that's going to take years of approval. So we... There's nothing about permanent lights in this application. It's merely to permit the scoreboard as is. So...
Okay.
I have a quick question. So the PA system, does it have any ability to control the volume so that the creative kids don't go rocking out with everyone?
I've been told that. Actually, what we did, when Paul came out to measure, we had the gentleman that typically speaks during the football games talk and make announcements. It was, I believe, in November. We didn't have a full crowd there. It was on a weekday. And Paul took different readings as he spoke, and we adjusted the volume. As I understand... I was told... I just emailed our technician to see if he can confirm it. But I was told it has a limiter.
It has a... I'm sorry, it has a what?
A limit on the dial. It's an electronic limit that keeps the sound at a certain level. So based on the feedback we're getting, we're going to move the speakers. But I think it's going to cost a fair amount of money to move them, and we want to get it done right. So we'll probably have Paul come back out and check when we're done, and balance the system, and make sure it's... And really, we'll do it in conjunction with the neighbors. So we want to be a good neighbor. We don't want to move the speakers and create another problem. So we want to get it done right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant?
None for the applicant.
Does staff have a proposed amendment to the conditions based on feedback from the commission?
We do.
Question before?
Yeah.
Okay. Quick question. The 70 dB level, that's county maximum level, that's at the property line, right?
I believe it is measured at the property line.
So in theory, it should diminish as it goes further into the neighborhood?
That's correct.
So I just want to make sure that's taken into account. So the dB level, we should not be receiving that anywhere in the neighborhood, per se.
That's correct, or it would be a violation of the ordinance.
What happens if, you know, for whatever reason, one of the kids gets creative, finds a way to get around the dial, or whatever the case is? What is the enforcement process should the sound go awry?
That's really difficult. I mean, the Office of Environmental Management Department is the one that enforces the noise ordinance. So they would need to be at an event to measure the reading and confirm that a violation had taken place, and then work through a process with the owner of the property to address the violation or ensure that it wouldn't happen again.
But that can be complaint-driven, obviously, if...
It usually is.
In the future. So that's a check on
Correct.
...folks out there.
That's correct.
Sorry, we closed the public comment period. Does staff have a recommended?
We do. I can start with it, and if Leanne needs to interject. So staff would be recommending that condition of approval number two read that this action is intended to permit the existing scoreboard in the current location and permit the speakers at four locations behind the bleachers at the locations and elevation shown on attachment four, exhibit B. So we would strike the part of the sentence beginning, "Either in the current location on the top of the scoreboard," or "From condition of approval two." In addition, we would amend condition of approval seven. We would strike advisory, and the condition would read, "Within 60 days of approval, the applicant shall remove the speakers from the top of the scoreboard and replace them with the four speakers at the location and height identified in attachment four, exhibit B." We would strike "If the applicant relocates," and begin with "the relocated speakers," strike "they," and "will be located on wooden utility poles" in the rest of the condition.
Comments?
No, it sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, thank you. We will entertain discussion amongst the commission or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended recommendations that staff just read out loud with one, two, and three.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. And then I just would ask staff to perhaps collect some of the emails from folks in the audience to make sure that any future meetings, especially if there's any future plans for improvement of the site, that they're notified.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming. We'll call the next item.
The next item is the planning director's report, item number five.
Staff does not have a report this evening. I think we all got noticed that the next meeting will be canceled due to lack of agenda items. However, the following meeting in May, there are probably going to be about six to eight items.
Never fails.
Usually works that way, right?
Yeah.
Pajamas.
I don't have any public comment, any miscellaneous items?
No, nothing else.
All right. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.